Becky, can you hear me? Oh, I can hear some noise now. I can't hear anyone.
I can't hear anyone either.
Oh, Mary, I can hear you.
Oh, I can hear you. I think the virtual folks can hear each other, but I don't think somehow we're not connected to the other. I just sent a message to Greg.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Thanks, Greg. I'm just guessing. I asked him to test it, but so let's see.
Hear us now in the room?
Oh, I am hearing something.
Hi, this is Kathy. Can you hear me?
Hi, Becky.
Hi, Greg. I'm sorry. There's someone here by the name of Dean Collins who said you told him to come for more information.
No, I said we needed more information and that we would put him on the next agenda, not tonight's agenda.
Why was he notified two or three hours ago that they didn't answer during the week?
And then why not?
One moment, please. All right, I'm turning this off. And why am I... Why am I still getting feedback on this?
Oh, because you're playing after Chris.
I did hang up. I am still getting feedback. Greg says no sound coming through. Mr. Collins, I'm very sorry for misunderstanding. What Greg said that he told you was that he'd be putting you on the next agenda. We can't add an item to agenda on the day. It has to be posted within 48 hours.
Of course.
So I'm very sorry to say that that is not... So I'm very sorry to say that that is not on this agenda. And the reason he's out with COVID right now. So when he emailed you that he puts you on the next agenda, somebody will be in touch with you. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Collins. And why am I getting feedback? I've got myself muted. I'm muted.
It may be your device.
Is that better? There we go.
And Greg can hear you, right?
No, he said that.
We can hear you now.
Okay, super. Okay. All right. And it is. Right. This Monday, June sixth, Board of Selectmen meeting. I call that to order at six thirty four. We are being recorded by, it looks like Sharon George. And it's being taken as well by Sharon. And the recording, which is in process, is being done by Zoom as a courtesy. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call vote. Kathy? Brian?
Yes.
And Becky? Anne?
Yes.
Okay, we have five of us here tonight. First on.
How did you get five?
Four. Exactly. Thank you. I wish it were simply can doing this. Okay. First item on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to make a comment, this is for comments with nothing related to anything on the agenda. Does anybody from the public have a comment they'd like to make? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move to chairman's report. First of all, I would like to welcome Debbie Powers, who is our new executive assistant to the select board and the town administrator. And unfortunately, she's not well today. But anyway, great asset. Very happy to have her with us. I'd like to also thank Jeff Bodmer Turner for his three years of very dedicated service. He always was more than happy and willing to listen to any and all perspectives. Thank you very much, Jeff. And to that, I would like to reconfirm our welcome to the Board of Selectmen, to Brian Solacy. Thank you. And then I just wanted to say a few quick words about we as a town going forward. It is my hope that we can kind of set a standard for perhaps a broader audience of coming together and collaborating in a respectful and understanding manner. We are a small town. We're close neighbors. We're close friends. And I think that we, as a community, can really bring this about and and make everything just a much more friendly and collaborative way as it has been in the past. So to that end, we will touch on some other items later regarding board processes, communication, and lines of communication. With that note, I would like to bring the joint meeting with the planning board together.
Well, I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board meeting of June sixth, and I'd like to just take a call to order for our members. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio?
Here.
Right, Ms. Foley?
Here.
Ms. Gilbert? Mr. Olney here, and Ms. Tenny?
Here.
We have a full quorum. And so I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board to order.
Okay, first order of business with the joint meeting is the reaffirmation of the select board's decision to postpone the June eleventh special town meeting. So the primary reason we had decided to postpone was due to concerns with quorum. Second was just getting more feedback from the community who felt that they just needed more time to be brought up to speed. But again, the primary reason being quorum. So the select board should reaffirm their vote. May I have a motion, please, to reaffirm, move to reaffirm the vote?
Second.
Thank you. Is there?
What happens if we don't do this? We haven't posted. We can't have the meeting.
If we don't reaffirm?
Yeah.
We have what? I'm not sure I understand what you mean. Actually, we've got the both both before us. We've got the second.
Yes, we know. Yes. And the discussion. The discussion is. What happens if we vote no?
Well, then I think we've created a conundrum for ourselves. Thank you, Anne. Okay. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Balota and Becky Jake says yes as well. So that is unanimous. We reaffirm. Now I turn the meeting over to the planning board to discuss what they would like to do.
Okay, I would like to propose a motion that the planning board recommends to the select board that we postpone the special town meeting to consider bylaw changes to the fall. Planning board is work hard over the past few months and honing the language and voting through the motions for recodification by law changes. Working through some administrative hardships and glitches over the past months. Our focus has been getting the motion language and the law details perfected and in agreement by the majority of the board. We've done this and are prepared to go before town meeting. I want to acknowledge the work of our vice chair, Sarah Creighton, who has taken much of the load and accomplished this besides all the setbacks. With this completed, the thinking was to do the ministerial administrative changes in the evening town meeting session at the end of the month. In the interim, I've received and have been receiving comments from the public that we have not done a good job of explanation of our proposed bylaw changes. Our website has been slow in providing up to date changes as well as publications to the cricket. Cricket will not be timed. My thoughts are that we should not only that this should not be the only way to convey these changes. I think by moving these changes to the fall will give us the necessary time to convey our changes to the Manchester residents, perhaps with handouts, workshops, et cetera. As with the master plan, I'd like the citizenship to know that the planning board is listening. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second it.
A little motion has been made. And seconded, is there any discussion from the planning board?
I have a question. Is the Board of Selectmen, select board, sorry, planning on having a matters before a spring, a June town meeting? Other than the zoning changes?
No.
Okay. And so I'd just like to speak in favor of this change, although I had.
Although that's not been voted yet.
Okay, so you don't anticipate.
I do not anticipate.
So just I this is a change from what I said the other day. So just I think it's important if I'm not sure how many people it's one of the disadvantage of a hybrid meeting is you can't see how many who and how many people are here. So there are two types, as Ron said, there are two types of changes to zoning that we have worked through. I call them policy changes and administrative changes. So administrative changes have made the zoning clearer, have improved it, have strengthened the special permit review, particularly around environmental issues, and made our bylaws more compliant with case law. The policy changes have proposed some changes in allowed uses. The administrative changes require a very careful read and or trust that the planning board and our consultants know their business. And the policy changes, I think, deserve legitimate debate about the policies at hand. And people have confused the two and criticized the process despite the fact we have followed the process regardless despite some roadblocks and have included a lot of inaccurate material. So I hope going forward with this additional time, people can listen and really understand and get the accurate information. So I do support the fall to fall move, June twenty seventh is the start of summer and hopefully the start of a great July fourth week. And the planning board staff is, as Ron said, is behind on updating the website and some administrative issues that we can take care of. And we can take off the flawed argument that we rushed despite four years of work. So in the ensuing time, we invite thoughtful input and productive suggestions. And I'll say the word selectmen, select boards, all right, we will be back to ask the select board to vote with the planning board to recommend these changes.
Any further discussion from planning board members?
Mary has her hand up.
Mary Foley.
Thanks, Ron. I'm just not clear. Are you saying that for us to push them all to the fall? Or were you still proposing a June twenty seventh meeting as in the memo?
All to the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, I'll. Christina?
Well, there in the memo, there was a date thrown out there, the June eleventh date and the June twenty seventh date. Neither of the planning board as a whole was not asked if that was a good date. So before we pick a date in the future, I would like a poll just to make sure we can get most people, most board members to attend.
Your decision, but yeah.
Well, it's typically done through Alan Wilson, the moderator. And it's always perceived that not everyone will be able to attend. So not all the select board was in on the dating. It tends to be moderator, town administrator chairs. So Christina, that might end up being a modification to a process. I'm not sure, but happily we'll look into that for you if you'd like. Alan Wilson.
Thank you, Becky. Just to clarify, it's the select board's decision as to when to call a meeting, not mine. They often, they always consult me, which is I'm grateful for. And in some towns, the select board sets a date for town meeting without even asking the moderator whether he'll be in town. So it's a it's a privilege for me to work with a board that thinks of that. But I think there's enough time between now and when we and when the board schedules a fall town meeting that they can ascertain people's availability for it. We've got a lot of we several months to work with.
Wonderful. Thank you, Alan, for reminding me. And yes, got a little jiggle on the memory there. And yeah, it's nice. We've got enough time to consult with many people and and hopefully get enable more of the board members to be there than not. Mary Foley has her hand up.
Thanks, Becky. Just just one more clarification question, because the memo that we received was the town administrator proposing that there be a June twenty seventh date with administrative changes and then a future fall date. And so what kind of change between the memo and now that we're kind of saying it's it's best to do all of it in the fall? Could you just walk me through that process?
I had been personally, I've been hearing the comments from the citizenry that I didn't think that we were prepared. I there were some issues with the website. I think I explained that. And then my my thought process was to make this motion and move this all to the fall where we'll have more time to get the citizens informed about what we're doing. I think there's some been some misinformation as Sarah has said. So I think it's in the best interest of everyone that we do this in the fall.
Additionally, Mary, I believe you received an email response to your email from Alan pretty much stating the same thing. And I know I've had people asking for more time to understand, better understand. As the information came in, we tried to be flexible in terms of how to address town concerns. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I agree wholeheartedly to wait until the fall. I just haven't been privy to the process, so I just wanted some background. Thank you.
Well, and I would say typically, had there been more involvement, it would have been directly with the chair as it had been. Christina? I guess so. Now, knowing that the Board of Selectmen are the ones that choose the date, it's my understanding from the draft minutes that the meeting was postponed or stopped the conversation because the date wasn't on the agenda. So where did the twenty seventh come up with? And I guess seeing that this. See, I'm going to stop you right there. Right now, the motion before us is for postponing the meeting, the motion, I mean, the.
Well, the planning board's recommending that we postpone the special town meeting.
And it's.
Bylaw changes to the fall.
Thank you. Right. And that's what's before us, not discussion of other matters that don't pertain specifically to this one. Did you have anything else to add to this particular motion, Christina?
I'm concerned about the dates when they're chosen. That's my concern. This is a planning board. You know, bylaw changes and these dates have been chosen without consulting the planning board.
Christina, that's not before us. And you're talking if you're asking about something that is not doesn't, it's not for you to decide.
I didn't say it was. I was just asking to be consulted in the future. Thank you.
And that's that's not part of your decision making. But we're happy to, you know, once the select board has made their decision regarding potential dates, we happily include other board and committee members. I would just like to say, as opposed to going back and scratching wounds, can we please try to move forward in a cooperative, cohesive, and congenial manner?
So there's no further discussion on my motion. I'd like to just take a vote. Not hearing any of this, Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio? Christina?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Olney?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
You're both yes.
Okay, thank you. So after that, the next motion would be for the Board of Selectmen. Do we support the move of the planning board's warrant articles or proposed warrant articles to the fall meeting? Is there any discussion?
Was there a motion or?
Well, I want discussion before we make the motion in terms of any other matters that might be on the warrant.
There are lots of matters that could be on the warrant.
No, there aren't that have been proposed at this time.
There being none.
Okay, so the question is, should we vote to accept the planning board's recommendation? Let's go to that one.
I move that we recommend we adopt the planning board's recommendation to postpone consideration at a town meeting of the changes to the zoning bylaws to the fall.
Okay, any comment discussion from the board? None? Roll call vote?
Becky, Becky, excuse me. Sarah Mellors has her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, Sarah, does this pertain to the motion before the select board at the moment?
Yeah, my confusion is, is are you merely postponing? Or are you remanding the warrant articles back to the planning board? Because I believe that will impact the ZB. And I'm not.
We have not done that yet, but thank you.
That's separate. Fine. Sorry.
No, no. Thank you very much. No, no. Thank you very much. Cross the Ts, dot the Is. We all need help. Okay, so would we accept? We've got the um. Move and second. So select board vote Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, and John Round is not here, so otherwise unanimous. Um, so I believe now the next portion would be to. Remand. Let's see reaffirm vote proposed. Uh, now we need to vote on that the proposed amendments be remanded to the planning board.
I think you should.
Go ahead.
I think we should ask Greg if that has to be done. I think he said this was enough.
Okay.
You may want to refer to Greg on this.
Greg or Alan?
With that question.
So it's 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 my understanding that a remand can only be done at a town meeting vote. I'm not, I'd have to double check the town council about a remand just by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. So unless Alan has some additional information on that, that might be helpful. I I believe Greg is correct. Um, there there is no, there is no warrant outstanding. For a town meeting because the select board voted not to that that Greg should not proceed to post it. So there there is now no warrant. Containing the zoning amendments outstanding and and therefore, I believe, under chapter forty eight, section five. Applications to the ZBA in the interim. Because the planning board has published notice and conducted its hearing on the amendments. But they're not voted on by town meeting. I believe the ZBA must consider applications that come before it in the interim under the existing zoning bylaw. And the applicants bear the risk that if the zoning amendments are ultimately adopted. And they impose more stringent requirements than the existing bylaws that. The applicants would then have to comply with the amendments. However. Given that most of the amendments proposed by the planning board relax rather than tighten zoning requirements. That risk is probably pretty small. I hope I've explained that clearly.
Can I just make a clarification? Uh, actually, Alan, I don't think we are relaxing the zoning bylaw. Most of the changes keep the existing policy in place. There's really no change one way or the other with a few minor uh. But but I think it's a mischaracterization saying we're relaxing the zoning bylaw.
I I I accept that correction, Chris. I think you're quite right. I I think that um. Nevertheless, I think I think the risk for applicants, because you're not changing the requirement, is pretty small. For the most part.
Yeah, I agree.
But but my I apologize though, that 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 was an that was an incorrect statement on my part, and I'm sorry for it.
Thank you, Alan. Um, Sarah Mellish has her hand up.
Yeah, you say the warrant wasn't posted. The warrant was posted in the Gloucester Daily Times. Does that matter?
No, Gloucester Daily Times is not our official periodical. It's the Cricket.
But it was posted.
Doesn't matter. It was not posted by the town.
The 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 posting that matters is the posting by the constable. That's 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 who's. That's who the selectmen direct to post in specified locations in town. The publication is a secondary requirement, but it doesn't constitute people posting.
Okay, and just so people know, there are some significant changes. In the zoning bylaws, wh- which will adversely impact the ability of the zoning Board of Appeals to review applications. And they're buried deep into the bylaws.
Uh, Sarah Creighton.
Um, I guess I would suggest that we have a working session with the ZBA and the planning board to uh understand. The um proposed uh rules and a process for this interim period. I think it's a very workable. Um. Set of things that but I suggest maybe we have a a working session to to get through, you know.
With the ZBA.
Council perhaps to help us out so that maybe that can help us, Sarah.
Sarah, anything else on that? Mellish?
Sorry. Um, no, that's fine. I have been voicing my opinion for five months and nobody's paid attention. So, you know, I'm. I have concerns. Um, and and I think that there were changes included in the administrative section. Which are going to adversely impact townspeople and they're not going to be aware of it. That's my only concern because they're going to come before the ZBA and the rules are going to change.
So are you amenable to a um what Sarah Creighton proposed?
We're perfectly fine, but it would have to be delayed until probably August after the forty B is done.
Understandable. Yes. Okay, so um, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, Sarah.
I think it's um really important that we um recognize that that one's opinion of the uh. Merits of the changes that we have proposed is opinion and that that's a debatable opinion, but um that there are um. But but though but to assert any of us to assert that something is adverse or or beneficial is really a matter of opinion. And so um I hope over the time people can understand and then make their own opinion about and therefore then leading to a vote at a town meeting. Based on their understanding and their opinion, because some people's adverse is another person's beneficial benefit.
Good point. Very good point. Uh, okay, so next we did have discuss public outreach and education. Ron, you covered that. Um, so I believe that covers the joint meeting with the planning board unless there's anything else.
I would like to just ask a question. I think it's very important that the select board. Endorses these zoning amendments. And I don't think the board has done that at to this point. And certainly, we have two new members who are probably. When even all that acquainted with what the changes are. And I wonder if that could be a a topic that we can address over the next several months or weeks. And so we could all come to an agreement to what should be in the zoning bylaw changes.
That's. Interesting. I think that's, you know, of course. You're part of the town, so we should all be as educated as well. Kathy Blata?
I have a suggestion. Um, so I have tried to attend as many of the planning board sessions as I can, even just as a resident. Um, to learn and one of the things I personally would like to see is a story. Okay, there are a lot of different changes being proposed. And sometimes when there's so much change coming at people all at once, it helps to have a clear narrative. And personally, I'd like to see something that says, here's what was determined at the master plan level, right? We have these requirements for affordable housing and and um diversity of housing stock. Um, here are the recommendations out of the master plan. Those are that's the what, right? But the how we're going to achieve it. I feel like I've missed that discussion and we went right to the details of the changes. So just personally, I feel like I have a little bit of a gap and. Maybe it would be helpful for this joint meeting to get that alignment on the how. Because I I what I specifically don't feel I have heard is the how much growth. Is. A right amount. Um, you know, there are certain proposals, you know, in the in the bylaws that could. Add X number of units, et cetera. So we're getting into some specific, but I just feel like there's a disconnect a little bit in the communication between the master plan. And the details and for very busy people, they just may not have had time to absorb everything. So just a thought.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
Any other comment?
I guess I would say that this is a process that's been going on for four years. And much of the questions of how were dealt with in the early years. And it's only now that it's coming together and it's it's a lot to expect. Anyone from the community to have followed four years of 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 communication. So yes, I think. I think that's. It's a question that actually has been dealt with, but hasn't been dealt with recently enough for the current audience. And so I I would, please don't have that meeting in August. I want to be somewhere else.
And thank you. Anne for pointing out that yes, that has been discussed and it has been clarified. This has been going on for some time. And um. But it's a valid point and important that that the current audience now needs that information. Um, maybe the best thing, and this was recommended to me, so I'm not, it's not my suggestion, is um a full and proper mailing. It's expensive, but you get the information out.
What do you mean by full and proper mailing?
Well, when the uh planning board has come up with. What would. Like to be presented. And the board of the select board. Um. Supports that, then we make sure that it's in everybody's hands prior or not make sure to our best to ensure that it's mailed out prior to town meeting.
I I think there's a sort of a complication here because I don't think people want to know exactly what the. Some people want to know exactly what the old wording was and what the new wording is. But a lot of people just want this was what Cassie was saying, the story behind it. Why are we? Why are we doing this? What was the rationale for doing it? The current bylaw, for example, has got a lot of repetition in it. It says. Get a special permit. Here's the whole process for the special permit. It does it three or four times in the zoning bylaw. I think what people don't need to know so much. W- w- why it's being repeated three or four times, but why it's better just to have one reference to how a special permit is issued. And have that be the definitive way instead of repeating it every time we say something needs a special permit. So it's true. I think it's the story behind it more than exactly what is being. Changed. So as long as everybody can see what the actual changes are as well.
And there are those who want the nuances.
Of course.
And and you know, that perhaps, yeah, yeah, I think the easiest thing is to provide. As much information as possible. I, you know, Anne, it's not.
Brian? I think part of the problem as well is that you've been living in this for years. Okay, you see it. It makes perfect sense to you. The late person doesn't see what you see. Okay, and it is laid out. It's simple. Uh, there is questions about transparency, what's going on behind the scenes. I think that if. Uh, and as you point out, if we can have a couple of working forums and to Sarah's point, I I'm on the ZBA now. Okay. And uh, there are concerns I have, and I'm I'm considering myself just part of the electorate right now. I'm not considering this all. Uh, a member of the select board, a member of the zoning board. I'm looking at this as someone who just wants to vote and I've got a lot of questions. Okay. And I think that we have an opportunity here. We can take uh rather than try to shove a square peg in a round hole. Let's take a look. Let's let's listen to what the people have to say, address those, come up with a simplified way of addressing your concerns and then move forward.
Brian, and and I'm going to jump in here in terms of um what you're saying transparency. Um, it's been so transparent. I mean, and and I'm, let me finish, please. That that, I mean, the meetings are posted, they're open, understanding comes from involvement. And I know Kathy and I have both been on virtually all the meetings, not all, but and quite virtually, not in reality.
Well, and that's my point is that, excuse me, is that the Zoom, there's uh we lose something in Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I think that's the problem. I think now that we're we're sitting here in hybrid, I hope the planning board takes on a hybrid approach. Okay. And I think that once people can sit in the room, members of the same board can talk to each other. Okay, that's what I'm about, probably what I meant. And I apologize if I used the wrong word. And I think that we're we're at a point now where we know what the public's looking for and let's approach it that way.
Well, we're learning what the public, but you have a board with a level of expertise and that's that's why we elect or appoint boards is for them to be able to. Dig through and and and. Make it digestible for the late person that. But again, that the word of transparency is so inappropriately applied.
I meant, I meant just the fact is that because of Zoom, there seems to be a lot that's lost.
Thank you. Sarah Creighton?
Um, I think the challenge is one of volume.
Yep.
So um, we hired an expert in zoning. Who has helped the board through this, so it's not special interests in Manchester coming forward. So. But I do think the challenge for people is that there's a significant volume of changes. That said, if people who are here or um. You know, are interested, all of the proposed changes are on the website and we hope the website will improve over time. But that volume, that significant volume, and I do think um. John Round at the last meeting said he hadn't had a time to digest it, but the board's select select board has had two meetings with the. Planning board and then or more.
Right.
Um, so it's probably unrealistic that any that most people will read it cover to cover. And so we're going to have to figure out how to break it down so that the volume may be more manageable. Um, we were advised, I'll just say, well, lastly, is that by our consultant to do the entire zoning bylaw in one article at a town meeting. And um maintain that that was probably not the right way to go and. Um, we didn't pursue that direction. So it is a, we've undertaken a huge project.
Right.
Um, I hope that people will um remain. Trusting that the administrative issues that we used are well thought out and um. That we can figure out a way to break it down, but um and if people want to get into the weeds, um. The invitation stands to be, give us constructive.
Right.
Input.
Um, and before Kathy, uh Mary Foley's had her hand up for some time and has been waiting very patiently. Uh, Mary Foley?
Uh, thank you, Becky. Um, actually, to kind of launch off a little bit of what Kathy had said. Um, and since people are making uh recommendations, I will. Reiterate my concern and recommendation that the planning board um do studies. Um, with impacts of of growth um. On water and sewer and infrastructure and services and schools and things like that. So we can determine. In a, at least a general way, what is the right amount of growth and what can this can Manchester support? So. I think um now is the time to do some of those studies and I hope we have a chance to do that.
Great. Thank you, Mary.
Um, Kathy Blata, you have one more.
Yeah, just one comment. Um, I think the uh just to piggyback on what Sarah was saying about the volume. Um, I just keep in mind the the busy people. I'll just I'll just use that phrase, right? You know. Um, people who are doing the kitty drop off and and have busy long, you know, many hours of careers every day and and. I I just think we need a set of collateral that one or two charts max that kind of. Graphically outlines the big picture and can lead people into that narrative. And when you find the the format that works for you, just repeating it over and over and over every time you present, that's the first thing that. That is put in front of people and just it it's necessary, unfortunately, to repeat information multiple times to have it.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and wrap this up at this point. I think there have been some really, really helpful um suggestions made. Um, from quite a few, and I think at this point, we have. Addressed the joint meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And at this point, I'd like to um move that the uh planning board to turn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Alicia?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Rolli?
Yes.
Ms. Kenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We're adjourned.
Wow, thank you all very much.
Thank you for her support.
Always. I know, this is really kind of fun to be back in person. Okay, I think we're a little ahead of schedule in terms of item number two. I don't, we can either do that or we can, skip to consent agenda. Greg, what do you feel?
Yes, I think you could move to the consent agenda and if time, I could move into my report, which is, which is brief.
Okay, so on consent agenda, has everybody had a chance to, go over the different sets of meetings and everything? Okay. Any discussion? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Sorry, Becky.
And second?
Um, I'm sorry, just, I did have one item. And I was looking at the, just the administrative typo. I thought I might have seen in one of the minutes.
Okay, typically the.
Might be my education that's needed.
No, and that's my fault. Um, typically if it's a de minimis change, you simply email it to, but I, I, I have forgot, I did not bring my agenda. And I come on over checking to see which people are eligible to vote on which sets of minutes. Okay, we may need to print those out. Yeah. I do have those in my piles of papers. Greg, you happen to have that handy regarding the minutes? I know I didn't.
So I think the, um, the emergency meeting, the one on the 27th, that would be what the current board can vote on. And then the other minutes would just be, the, the, the previous board members.
Okay, so that would be you and me.
Yes.
Shall we wait for another meeting and let John? I, I, or should we just, I think it's all right. Let's go ahead, go forward. I don't think there were, so let's, let's break those minutes out. And the rest of us can, we could all approve the consent agenda. Okay, so let's first do the, uh, let's take out the minutes not, let's do 5/27. All right. Okay, and, and again, Kathy, regarding those minutes, again, if they're de minimis, you can email directly to whomever's taking. If it's Debbie Powers, um, either Gail or Sharon. Um, but not, not a reply all. It has to be a, a single. But if it's what you can do now, you want to say what that change is, we can include that. They can make the amendment and we can approve consent agenda as amended, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, literally, it was a de minimis, it was just the time of the meeting, it looked like.
Well, no, go ahead and make that change unless, you know, which minute, so it's the 27th, correct?
I believe it was the emergency meeting.
Yeah. You want the other date?
Yes, it just, it, uh, it said the meeting took place at 8:00 AM and.
It was.
Meeting adjourned at 8:36 AM.
Yeah.
Yep. This was the meeting. This was, okay, is this, this was the Friday morning meeting or the?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was the Friday morning meeting.
It was at different times.
Well, I.
Yeah, you were, good point. And I'm quite sure that 8:36 was correct because I had an 8:39 train.
Got it. Oh, so it's a different, you know, a different meeting. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the 24th.
No, that's all right. It's better to, you know, be clear on it. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minute meetings from May 27th, not the 16th?
Go move.
Second. Okay, Kathy Blodde? Brian Solace?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes votes yes. Okay, minutes of, uh, May 16th. Anne, did you have any changes to that? Nor did I. I have a motion to approve the minutes. So move. And I second Anne?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes sec, uh, approves. So there we go. Okay, consent agenda done. And we're a few minutes early yet.
So we can have.
We can go to, um, can I, can I, Greg, am I able to pass over item number four? Or do we need to wait until that time to pass it over?
Well, there'll be a very quick update that I'll give, but it's not as in-depth as it was originally planned to be.
Right. Okay, um, so I guess. And you're welcome to come on in. You're from Hamilton?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, well, we hopefully won't take more than a couple of nanoseconds to take care of business prior to you.
So I just had a couple of, couple of items on my report that if you want to take that up now.
Sure, on administrator's report.
So again, it can be brief here. The, um, good news on, I'll, I'll explain that the new floats are, are in and the ramp is functioning and that facility is, is up and running. So kudos to the construction firm that we had and to DPW and overseeing it. And Bayern Pike's good oversight as well. Bayern was doing the last of the, uh, the carpentry work yesterday and today. And I believe, I believe he got that done today. So that, that facility is, is operational and folks can say goodbye to the little yellow dinghy that shuttled people from land to the floats, um, last year. So good riddance to that. So a good project came out well and, uh, under budget and on time. And so that, I shouldn't say under budget, on budget and on time. We will be embarking very soon, starting next week, probably the, the, the largest construction project for this coming summer. And that'll be the relining of the main water line, water pipe up School Street. So from, from Central Street up to the Essex Country Club. Um, so that will cause some disruptions and some detours. We will try to maintain one-way traffic at all times during that, uh, construction project. It'll take a few months to get through. So we are looking at, you know, the, the, the summertime for that project to, uh, to be done. Flyers will be distributed to, to homeowners over the next few days, alerting them to the project and what they can expect. Greenwich, uh, the firm will be doing the work. They'll be mobilizing and getting things ready over the next couple of weeks. Construction will begin in earnest until the end of the month. So this is a, a relining project. So they, it's not digging the whole length of the road. But it is digging in the strategic spots and then forcing down the relining that, that goes into the existing pipe. And then new cutaways for all of the service lines have to be done. And that's, that's what takes a lot of time for the project. So that will be a fairly major construction project. It will cause some inconvenience on School Street during the summer as, as we get that project underway and, and wrapped up in early fall. So want to give people a heads up about that. We'll have more information as the project progresses to give people updates so that they can appreciate what, what to expect as, as we move forward with that. And as I say, that's, that's the, the bigger prod, biggest project we have going for this coming summer. And it'll be, be a heads up on that. So that's where we are with some construction updates. The other item I wanted to just again flag for the board is to be thinking about your calendars and looking to see when we might be able to schedule the annual board workshop slash retreat so that we can, uh, take a look back in terms of what has gone well or what could have gone better in terms of process and outreach. A little bit of a topic you'll have a little later this evening. And also to look ahead in terms of priorities and where we want to make sure we, we focus our energies. So again, I don't need to take meeting time on that, but we should be looking at perhaps an early July, early to mid-July date. We've done them on a Saturday morning, but not, not cast in stone to do that. But that has been a time that's been done in the past. But we can be good to hear your ideas and suggestions for, for that meeting. So those are the two main items I wanted to bring up this evening.
Thank you. That one. I think we are okay to go ahead with item two. We can wait 30 seconds. Okay, 7/25, item two, select board reorganization. Typically, vice chair becomes chair. However, if someone else feels that they would like to fill that bill, I hope that we elect Becky Jakes to be the chairman of the board, of the select board.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Blodde?
Yes.
And chair accuses or presumed chair. So thank you very much. For vice chair, unless there is discussion on that, I would like to suggest we nominate Anne Harrison. Of course, it would be John or Anne. Anne has had, um, more experience on boards in town. So I think Anne has, um, good cred.
I'm very supportive.
So second? Any discussion? Kathy Blodde?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes says yes.
And I'll say yes.
There you go. Okay. So next, typically what we would do is discuss liaisons. We do have a few minutes. Were you all able to look over some of the notes regarding liaisons? Okay, um, I was wanting, Kathy, you seem to have been in attendance of a lot of the ZBA and planning board meetings. Do you have any interest in acting as liaison for that? Anybody else have interest in that or prefer that?
I'm there anyway.
Well, for a little bit. And, um, okay, so, and that obviously you're not going to be liaison on that one. So Kathy, um, we also have parts and rec committee. I think there's a logical fit there. Parts and rec, Brian. John has been doing, uh, water, the task force. And probably I, I'm, I imagine that he's happy to stay with that. Um, and if he's doing water resource, he probably should do CONCOM as well. Since he's not here to say no, thank you. Unless someone else would like that one?
I would take CONCOM.
You want CONCOM? Okay, good. There you go. Okay, that way we're not unduly assigning. Okay, so that is. And that's John. So that one, two, one, two, one, one. And then typically it's the chair who does the board rep for the school collaborative. Eli has done DPW. And that probably is good to tie in with, um, the water task force unless somebody else would like that one. Anybody?
Um, I would be interested in that if John doesn't want to take that on as part of his.
Okay, I would say that you're doing ZBA and planning board. And, um, but if you want to be involved with that, I don't.
I'm, I'm fine with John doing it. I'm just saying if he doesn't want to.
Wonderful. Okay. Then I will do that. We can make that or, um, CB backup. Okay, um, library. We haven't, I don't know that we've had a library liaison in a while. Anybody have interest? Well, let me rephrase that. Grab a hand to go up for that one.
Sure.
There you go, Brian.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, that's, that's, that'll be good. They've got some good stuff coming up there. Council on Aging. We have a prior, um, select board member who has been the liaison for that as she is involved and the housing trust. And if nobody objects, I would like to recommend that Muffin Driscoll, if she's willing, remain our liaison for that.
That's both council on aging.
Council on Aging.
And housing.
We can ask Muffin that. She has. Say it again?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, wonderful.
Housing authority and.
I'm going to ask Muffin, okay, if she's willing to do that. We see Muffin Driscoll here?
She, she. Yeah. Yeah, Becky, I, I'm more than happy to continue with the Affordable Housing Trust. I've not been the council on aging representative though.
Okay. Um, and what about? Okay, so we've got the Affordable Housing Trust. And do you, do you think it's logical to be involved in COA? Or would that be better if one of us were to be to liaise there?
I just hesitate only because of the job change and a little time constraint that may come up for me. So I'd like to stick with the housing trust though, for sure, as long as you'll have me.
Wonderful. You've been an immense help in keeping us apprised of what's going on there every year. So and thank you for volunteering to continue to do this, Muffin. Okay, thank you. And with that, um, council on aging, do you want to jump on that one or no?
Sure.
Okay, so Anne is COA and with that, we've taken care of liaisons and the reorganization. And we are.
What about the Board of Health?
Oh, the Board of Health. Well, um, Board of Health. Okay, uh, hmm, that's a good one. Well, why don't I do that for now? In addition to, all right, yep. So I will do that and school collaborative as well as the other stuff. Okay, are we good? Greg, is there anything else?
No, that's a good list. Thank you.
Okay, minute and a half late. Sorry about that. Hamilton? Come on down. And do you have all the cords you need?
I don't.
Okay, we need our 1623 person. The light's not on there. Please. Is that's? And if you want to plug into the. And if you want to plug into the. Do you need electric supply? Is that?
That looks like it.
Okay.
So I am, my name's.
I'm not seeing it. On the Zoom yet?
I don't.
Tom? Thank you. I just don't want to start until, there we go, okay, thank you, and thank you very much for coming to give your time to this, so.
You're welcome. Thank you for inviting us, um my name is Artal Eventos, I'm with Woodard and Kern. We are the design engineers for the Chabaco Road Infrastructure Improvement Project. Joe Demelot, the town manager for Hamilton, asked me to attend this in person. He would like to be here, but they also have a select board meeting. So um what I I'm here to do is just to write a little bit of an uh. Small, a short presentation that'll give you uh basically a project overview, some updates on some changes that have occurred over. The course of the design and then also what our current schedules.
Thank you.
I can kind of quickly just go through this, uh I believe Tim Olson is attending this by Zoom as well. He's a DPW director for the town of Hamilton.
Very interesting.
So as an overview, roadway improvements are proposed on Chabaco Road. From its intersection with Essex Street, which is up here in the northwest corner of projects. All the way down to the Hamilton Manchester Town Line in the southeast. The first uh portion of work is approximately seven hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty. Linear feet of existing paved surface that is being milled and overlaid. That's shown here in the red and then there's approximately thirty-three hundred feet of existing unpaved road surface that is being regraded and paved. Some of the project objectives include trying to address public safety concerns and helping improve access for emergency vehicles. Improving pavement conditions, as you can see from some of these photos, pavement is deteriorating and needed repair. Improve drainage and reduce some sediment buildup and also improve existing stormwater treatment. I think most people are aware, but the original design that had the project. His original design for the project was to move the portion by gravelly pond further away into the east. However, with the um Manchester Town Meeting last year, rejecting that, our current. Project is to regrade that roadway in its current location um and the current right of way. The new design is currently that road naturally slopes so that runoff will drain towards gravelly pond. We're gonna regrade it such that it'll runoff will will run away from gravelly pond. So from instead of running towards the pond, it's going to run back towards the east side of the road. Um and then we've added some stormwater treatment that doesn't exist to help deal with some stormwater. Um and so for that. We have proposed two swales, a northern swale and a southern swale that we grassed. Um help pick up some of the sediments and then those discharged to stormwater treatment units. That help remove on both on the north end and the south end that help remove. Suspended solids and then they're discharging to wetlands on the east side of the road. To the north on property owned by the town of Hamilton and through an easement on private property on the south side. Uh some other changes that have come in are the roadway is going to be a consistent twenty feet, so some of the roadway is going to get more narrow. That's for trying to help with some traffic calming measures. There'll be speed humps installed seasonal, so they're temporary, they can be removed during the winter. To plowing and and road maintenance. There'll be some line striping to define lanes and then Hamilton's also looking into restricting truck traffic on the roadway. And I know that they are also. Doing improvements for their salt treatment in this area to either, you know, reduce it further or eliminate it if if at all possible. As far as the project schedule goes, we are just awaiting comments from Meba. We expect them either, you know, next week or following week. Our current, we're currently planned to advertise in Central Register on June twenty-ninth. Our bid date, our bid opening is scheduled for July thirteenth. And then we need to have contracts signed with the. With the successful contractor by July twenty-ninth. And there's plans to get right into construction. And uh in August, probably late August, early September, in that timeframe. With anticipated construction and towards the end of the spring twenty twenty. With that, I just wanted to see if there were any questions.
I do, but I'll start with the board first, Kathy, do you have any questions? Brian?
No.
Ann?
Just a comment that it's nice to hear that you're worrying about reducing salt and limiting trucks, both of those are important to us.
Right, and those were the ones I was going to touch on as well, so you stated that you all are working on that?
So um the the town has, Hamilton's DPW department has. Taken some steps that I'm aware of to try and and get equipment that's needed to reduce salt treatment there and. I don't know if Tim is on the line, he may be able to explain it and watch out as to what they're doing.
Yep, I would happy to do so, Tim Olson, DPW director in Hamilton. As Art has mentioned, we have gone through uh the beginning stages of outfitting our Sanders with spray units. To be able to pre-treat, uh which would a reduce the amount of road salt we would use. Yeah, all all throughout town, many communities are pre-treating. We are going through that direction to outfit the trucks and looking at alternatives for materials to 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 spray and to to use as pre-treatment.
Uh may I ask you, Tim, what types of chemicals do you use for pre-treating?
Well, we we don't currently use any, but I know a lot of communities are using brine or calcium chloride. But there are other environment, more environmentally friends friendly materials that we are exploring. We're just trying to make sure that what we're looking at is is the best scenario. For reducing salt as well as keeping the road safe for travel.
And what type of truck restrictions are you all looking at? Time.
So we've, I I contacted Mass DOT, Essex Street is Route twenty-two, but it's under local jurisdiction. They have given me the green light to be able to sign, to place signs or to install signs along Essex Street. To make more of a preferred truck route to keep the trucks along Route twenty-two. Down Essex Street to Woodbury, to Rubble Road and out to Grapevine, uh to keep on that twenty-two corridor. These are, it would be a preferred truck route. We are not in the position at this time to exclude any trucks that would involve a study through the state. And um but right now, what we can do in the in the near term is put up some nice signs that basically state that it's a preferred truck route. It's the more collect, it's the collector streets. Tobacco is more of a local road, so we're going to try to keep all the trucks as much as we can. Besides, obviously, local deliveries for, you know, your water plant or or for homes up in that area. Major, you know, through trucks, we're trying to keep them on Route twenty-two through signage at this time.
And my last question before we turn over to public and the rest of the board is the speed bumps, those are seasonal. Typically, do you have a a. Season range, when would they go in, when would they typically come out?
We don't have, I mean, I can't say a date, but it would be once the weather breaks on both sides in the spring as well as in the fall. Once we, if there's snow in the forecast or colder temperatures, obviously with precipitation. You know, we we then take them out for plow season, so mostly this, you know, the kind of spring through fall, they would be in.
Thank you, any other questions from the board? All right, any public questions or comments? And just a reminder, please do go through the chair. Steve Gang, are you speaking as chairman of Concom, Steve, or will you be speaking as a member of the public? If you get unmuted?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be speaking as a member of the public. Drawing on my experience as chair of the local Concom and also as chair of our. Task force on drinking water quality and quantity. So I think that. This step to repave Chabaco Road in its current location poses some serious risks. To Manchester's public water supply. And I believe that if this was being proposed by our town, in our town. This close to our town's public water supply, that there would be an outcry in town and you would be unable. Legitimately to to do this step, you have to consider better alternatives. So let me take a moment or two and tell you simply why I believe it's it's a risky step. I attended the meeting of the Hamilton Concom last Wednesday, in which the project plans were reviewed carefully with an emphasis on this section of road. Because this is the only change from what Hamilton's Concom approved. Over a year ago. And so I heard the testimony from their consultants, I reviewed their plans, as did others. And I did not hear enough evidence, if, for example, they were before our Concom. To know with sufficient certainty or sufficient proof that this is an improvement. And the reason for that is that they are holding themselves to stormwater management standards. Which are significantly lower and fewer than the best management practices. And they're doing that because they characterize this as redevelopment and not new construction. So from the get-go, their stormwater management could be insufficient. It's very hard to know from the evidence presented to their Concom. And for the record, I requested for that reason that they continue for two weeks. So that our Concom and our Water Resource Task Force and our DPW and others would have a chance. To develop a more informed opinion, their Concom rejected that suggestion. You should know that gravelly pond is primarily what we used to call spring-fed, meaning its water comes from underneath, from groundwater. So the concept of treating storm runoff with salt and other hazardous materials. In a way that infiltrates it into wet ones and into groundwater does not mean it's not going to enter our water supply. Gravelly Road is within a hundred feet, sorry, Chabaco Road is within a hundred feet of the bank. Of our reservoir and it's sixty or seventy feet directly above it. So it it is a natural assumption that both surface water and groundwater, some of it will find its way in there. Further, the the proposed treatment units, while they may be ambitious, grassy swales, treatment. Treatment scepters and outfall pipes. Those are designed to remove what are called suspended solids, meaning dirt. They're not designed to remove salt, they're not designed to remove metals. Which come out of our tar, car and truck tires, lead, copper and others. They're not designed to remove polyaromatic hydrocarbons that come out of exhaust pipes and they're not designed to remove PFAs. Which come out of brake lines. And this is an issue because when you pave a road, there's a risk that traffic levels will increase. So without any certainty about that. I would recommend that this select board be more. Uh serious in your recommendations, if you make recommendations, that no road salt be used in this section. It's worth observing that we ban the use of road salt in the section just beyond this, in our town, even though it's not right up against our reservoir. It is in fact crossing a wetland, which flows as all those wetlands do into the into gravelly pond and round pond. I also recommend that the select board consider confirming. That our portion of Chabaco Road will remain permanently unpaid. And that you do that by, Concom is happy to assist you with this. Uh by creating a conservation easement on it. Um and that will be perhaps the best we can do. To limit the amount of through traffic if Hamilton's unwilling to go through the effort of banning trucks. Eliminating hazardous materials that aren't in transit to water treatment or or other legitimate uses. And uh. Eliminating the use of salt. That's it, thank you very much.
Um Steve, before you sign off, I forgot to ask for your address since you were as a resident.
It's a very good question, I just moved in the last week, my address is twelve Ashland Avenue, Manchester.
Thank you. Mary Foley.
Thank you, Mary Foley, one Pulaski Drive, I just wanted to. Say I'm in complete agreement with what Steve Gang just said, much more eloquently than I could have. There's great concern, this is right near and above our drinking water supply. I do urge the select board to be super diligent in in proposing some restrictions or trying to propose some restrictions that can happen there. The town bought this piece of land to protect our watershed and I I just deeply urge that we continue that process, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other members from the public who would like to speak on this? Christina DeLicio?
Thank you, Christina DeLicio, six Lincoln Ave. I was just wondering if, I would like to thank Steve for his diligence and those words agree a hundred percent. Um and I do know that as an abutter and with concerns that Mr. Gang just expressed, has the town? Thought about appealing Hamilton's Conservation Commission's decision until we can find some of those answers? That Mr. Gang had asked, thank you, there's a very short timeframe for that, thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Did you have some, there we go, um. Any other members? The public? Yes, Sheila Hill?
Sheila Hill, two Running Ridge Row. Could I ask how the process of addressing. Concerns about Chabaco will proceed from here?
Greg?
So the process included the Hamilton Concom hearing. Steve reviewed his efforts on behalf of the town at that hearing. You have tonight's review, and you need to make some decisions as to whether or not you wish to continue to pursue any additional conditions or restrictions. The town of Hamilton does own the road, basically. They have the right to pave it. And as you all know, we tried to get a swap going last year, but that was, it didn't meet the two-thirds requirement that is required for a land swap.
So at this point, what, if any, stipulations could we put on or recourse would we have?
So I think they take the form of two. One is to reach out to the Hamilton Board of Selectmen as well and to work with them to see if you can come to some agreements. Or the alternative is what Mr. Licio indicated, and you could put in an appeal to their, to the Concom approval.
Thank you, Greg. Any further comment from the public? Steve Gang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve Gang, 12 Ashland Avenue. As a Concom member, I know that appeals to DEP or, in the case of your local bylaw, to Superior Court take a good deal of time to work through. You should bear in mind that Hamilton made a strong point to their Concom that their financing for this project, which was approved by town meeting almost three years ago, their financing is available only through August. So anything that delayed their project past that point obviously complicates their ability to execute.
Thank you, Steve. Well, personally, I think some very important and valid points have been brought up by the public, and we have another comment or question. Sheila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess if we still, do we still have our, I don't know if our Hamilton contingent is still with us, but I know the residents along Tobacco Road have been very involved in opposing this. Can we have an update on what their process or opposition has yielded at this point? Is there anyone that can address what residents there are doing?
I'm a little confused by your question, Sheila. Are you asking the town of Hamilton DPW? To?
I'm asking anyone who's in a position to answer what has been the latest input from residents of the road.
Tim Olson, are you able to offer any information on that?
Sure, last meeting, we explained the changes. There, I think some of the abutters, their more concerns are guardrails and speed, which we've addressed both. And looking at maybe a truck exclusion in the future or some type of limitation on trucks. So we're all working on all three of those.
Thank you. Chuck Dam. Chuck, are you able to give us any further enlightenment from your perspective as our head of DPW?
Sure. So Chuck Dam, DPW Director. It's actually gravelly pond and the rubble of the road behind me. But I guess a couple of things come to mind. One is that I did attend the Hamilton Concom meeting as well as speak with Tim directly. And I think that, you know, a lot of, and I obviously talked with Steve and the task force about this, and so, you know, it has been looked at. Certainly, you know, paving a road next to a water supply is not something that, you know, is beneficial to the water supply necessarily. However, it's not like it's never been done, and I think with proper mitigation and, you know, continued maintenance, we should, you know, be able to exist and coexist. Certainly, if the neighbors or, you know, other people start using this road in a heavy manner, you know, we could see the impacts of that. However, you know, there are very real concerns to do with, you know, our ability to, you know, maintain the water supply in general. Our operators use the road and the gravel portion on a daily basis to go to Round Pond. So, you know, they can tell you firsthand, and if anybody had the opportunity to go and drive this such stretch of road even today, it's in total disrepair, and I have to be in constant contact with Tim to, you know, grade the road and maintain it. And so I can understand from his perspective and also the residents that live there, you know, why they would want it paved. I would say that, you know, the existing use is not without its own risks, and so this mitigates some of those risks, and that's something that should also be considered. You know, like I said, the road is almost impossible in some points. And so if someone were to drive down that road with a landscape trailer full of gasoline or other, you know, things, you know, even if it was our guys going to deliver, you know, the hypochlorite to Round Pond well, you know, that it could be jostled off of the truck, and this is not, you know, me just making things up, that could literally happen. And that would impact our water supply as well as well as the environment. So it's certainly not a perfect project. I would prefer to get moved away as much as possible. But it's the project in front of us, and I think if we continue to do our due diligence and to hopefully restrict the truck traffic as well as, you know, the, like Steve said, our ability to not pave our road will not make it a, you know, through street typically. So I think those are all considerations, and so, you know, therefore, you know, as I said, I don't think there's much more that we would expect from them at this point for the project that they have in front of them. You know, I kind of made the analogy, last time, we paved Lincoln Street at some point, we built two new schools next to our Lincoln Street well at some point, and I did not hear many objections to that. And I will say, from this experience, I will look into no-salt solutions in our area, which we have not done. So that's just to say, I think, you know, we are where we are, and I guess if there's any specific questions, I've thought about it quite a bit. And, you know, I don't see increased risk necessarily unless, you know, if it does become increased traffic, those things that Steve talked about are certainly top of mind.
And what about the proposed stormwater management that they've got?
Like I said, it is a total suspended solid solution. It is not treatment. I do not know of any, you know, stormwater treatment, you know, that we do in town anywhere. You know, biological or chemical treatment or anything like that, so that would be a new one, I think, in this situation. It is sloping the roadway away from the pond, which is a benefit to the pond, like I said, in the existing condition. Tim and his guys are there regrading this road with diesel graders and hydraulic fluid. You know, I made the joke with Tim that I'm sure none of his stuff leaks hydraulic fluid or diesel, but it is certainly a risk, and that stuff can happen without notice. So, you know, that is a constant risk to our water supply that we live with today. And I just want to make that point. So, yeah, it's, again, it's not going to treat, if we get, you know, increased traffic counts and there's increase, you know, brake dust, exhaust fumes and the like, you know, that's a potential risk. But the traffic that's there now is also presenting that risk. And so that's why I think our best path forward, at least in the, you know, the project I see before me is to make sure that we work with Tim and the town of Hamilton to, you know, abate any of those risks before they happen.
Thank you, Chuck. Nate DeRozier, do you have anything to offer? Or, I mean, any other, not to have anything to offer, we know you're awesome. But any other perspectives, comments?
No, I think Chuck covered it pretty well. You know, we have obviously, Chuck and I have obviously discussed it quite a bit together, and I think he covered all the points that, you know, that we've discussed, so, you know, yeah, I think he's, Chuck has covered it.
Awesome. Thank you, Nate. Christina DeLicio?
Thanks, Nikki. Yep, sorry, just trying to click all those buttons. So I guess I just wanted to follow up on what Nate had mentioned, not Chuck, I'm sorry. And that about our Lincoln Street well, and we paved and we built two schools, and now we have, you know, high PFAST. And so if we take our mistakes of the past, gravelly pond is our only, you know, clean source at this point, so I think we really need to be careful and protect it. And my last comment was, I believe on this project started, it was only going to be paved to the last resident's home. And so it's expanding, expanding, and so I just wondered if that was still an option so that we could, you know, protect that water supply that we desperately need to cherish. Thank you.
Christina, before you go, if what was an option still?
Paving it to the, I know the safety concern is what's been repeated over and over. So if we can just pave, stop paving at the last home, and then leave the rest unpaved and, you know, continue some maintenance on that gravel instead of paving it, I think, like we said, that we're trying to maybe not pave the Manchester. It would just be a deterrent for complete through traffic.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Foley?
Mary Foley, 1 Pulaski Drive. Christine said, part of what I was going to ask, I was going to ask if we could stop, request to stop the pavement at a certain point before our water supply. And I did want to also raise the concern that we know our PFAST levels at the Lincoln Street well are pretty high, and if we would have to shut down Lincoln Street well, we rely on gravelly. And so it's even more important that we wouldn't start compromising that water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, do you have any comments on this?
I think you have a good amount of information. If you want to pursue a conversation with with your counterparts in Hamilton, I think that would could yield some additional conditions that might be beneficial. I think, I think what you're hearing is that there's no perfect solution. We missed an opportunity for a better solution, and we're trying to make the best out of this one.
All right, well, and let's just continuing to move forward with things, I think we've had some very good thoughts brought forward. And from the board, do we, Kathy Blot?
Yeah, I do have just, I guess, a question. The public did bring up some really good points around the no-salt. And if that's something that we could pursue, it brings to mind other reservoirs that I drive past, clear no-salt zones, and I think that would be something I would personally like us to pursue. And then question around, would there be any benefit to increasing the frequency around testing, you know, once whatever is paved, I'm sorry?
I'm just saying that would really be us not, I don't think that.
Yeah, well, right, so would there be some benefit to, I don't know how often we do test right now the water supply, and would there be a benefit after the road is paved to some form of increased or more precise testing to try to catch any potential problems really early?
That was, it's a good point. Chuck?
Yeah, I guess certainly, we test very frequently for the gravelly pond situation, you know, and Lincoln Street for that matter, so we can, we will continue to do that, we will be required to do that. I guess part of the task force work that, you know, some people may not be privy to is that, you know, we are looking at seeing groundwater influences on gravelly pond, and where exactly they're coming from, whether it's more related to, you know, some of the area, the ponds adjacent, Round Pond, Beck Pond, and up the stream, and then also, you know, across the way, as Steve said, there's wetlands, there's two landfills as well. So in concert with the landfill testing that we're required to do and the drinking water sampling that we're required to do, there is a lot of sampling and data that we can look to and base historic trends and protect, project future trends as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, I guess the next question is, does the board, would the board like to continue or reach out to the Hamilton Select Board with some questions and comments?
We have an obligation.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. And?
Given their time schedule and the fact that they're currently meeting, it's going to be tricky.
Yep.
So.
We have email.
Yeah, but you can't email a board.
No, but we could email a chair and see if they, we could set up a time for dialogue.
Yes.
But obviously, would that be done by a subcommittee, or would it require the full board? Greg?
I think I might suggest, you know, a chair-to-chair conversation. And then if that seems to be proving productive, then it could be an opportunity to set up a joint meeting for the two boards.
Understanding that we have some time constraints. All right, well, we've gone over a little bit. Is there any other comment from the public before we let the nice Woodward and Kern rep? Okay, well, I would, Greg?
Yeah, I've just, just a thought that occurred to me, not that it is in the interest, but longer term, I mean, if, you know, 20 years from now, you see a traffic situation that has grown beyond what people are comfortable with, you always have the option of building that alternative road if the voters would approve it. So I think this is what we have before us now, but looking on the longer-term horizon, that other option is not closed. That always is an option, and at some point, it may be a joint project in terms of funding. So it's just something to keep in mind down the road.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, Tim Olson, Chuck Dam, Nate DeRozier. Thank you. And you were Joe, as you said? Oh, I'm really good at that. All right, well, thank you. Okay. So Greg, I will chat with you and see where we go on that.
Do we want to consider Steve Gang's suggestion about putting a conservation easement on our end? I think that's a very good idea.
Mind if I comment on that real quick, representing the DPW in Hamilton?
Yes, Tim.
So just real quick, I just wanted you to know, I mean, that's obviously your call, it's in your town. But we do utilize Tobacco Road if there's any type of emergency at your water treatment plant. We are the, since your plant is in Hamilton. we are the first responders to get to that plant. So I know that's a short piece of roadway, but a lot of this project is based on public safety and response, public safety response. If it's ambulants, if it's fire trucks, if it's, you know, whatever, whatever the need calls for. But we would go down tobacco to get to your Manchester water plant. Right now, with the condition of the roadway, we would damage our equipment and we would have to go out to 128 and up a few exits. Considerable amount of time, additional time to get there. So I've just, I'm throwing it out there. I mean, obviously it's your call. But that little stretch of roadway, even though if it remains gravel and you guys do a really good job maintaining it, just that would be something we would have to travel over to get to your water plant for a public safety response. Just throwing that out there.
Well, and as usual, there's, they're always a lot more than what's on the surface. And thank you. Meaning that there's always a lot more than we know. So I think the best thing for us right now, given that we have some time constraints, would be to reach out individually with any concerns to Greg. And I can reach out to Chair of their select board. Is everybody amenable to that? Okay, individually? All right. Next, we have Board of Health update.
So I can, I can jump in here if that's okay. And so originally, we were going to have Board of Health in, there's some additional work that we decided would be beneficial before having them come before you. So we hope to have them in at your next meeting. They are working on the the job description for a new in-house health agent. As you, as you know, we currently do not have an in-house health agent, but we contract that out. And discussions through the winter and in the, in the new budget concluded that we should move towards an in-house health agent. So that is in the works and we're getting close to having that job description finalized and we'll be happy to have the board in, Board of Health in at your next meeting to share that. In conjunction with with that new hire, there's a desire to make sure both the Board of Health and you as a board are on the same, you know, same page, if I can use that phrase, overuse phrase, to to make sure we understand, you know, the responsibilities of the health agent and to whom that person reports. And and that the the lines again are clear and that communication channels are are well laid out so that we can proceed, proceed smoothly and then be as effective as possible. So we do have Town Council working with with the State Department of Health, ironing out a few differences that exist there. I don't think they're insurmountable by any means. And we'll have some more detail on that for you at your next meeting. And we should be able to proceed in in good fashion. So perhaps to answer questions, but as I say, we'll save the bulk of the details for for your next meeting.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, wow. We've got three minutes before we move on to the next topic, which is dispatch next steps. So we will wait on that. Greg, I do have a question on the consent agenda. Going back to that, we need to, I believe the board needs to come by to sign document. Is that correct?
Yes, we will need your signature on the proclamation. So we'll have that ready certainly by the end of tomorrow at the latest.
Thank you. All right. So anybody want to go and do their John Hancock?
It's not noon. End of day tomorrow?
End of day tomorrow. Tomorrow is Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard that the proclamation would be ready by the
By the end of tomorrow, so we can go the next day.
It is eight twenty and we can move on to agenda item number five, which is dispatch next steps. We've had a lot of correspondence regarding this. And I would like to thank people who have reached out to the town regarding their concerns. I would like to say I I've received a lot of emails stating that the majority of the town has made their feelings known. What I would like to point out is we had 35% of registered voters who attended, which actually is a very good attendance. It's it's in excess of what we do typically get. So of the 35%, 50, 57% voted in keeping dispatch in town. So we have heard what those who voted have said. I I I would like to say personally that I was disheartened by the amount of misinformation that was put out on social media. And it was a lot of misinformation and misrepresentations. However, that said, we go forward with what we have. And what we have is a majority of those who voted clearly stating that they would prefer to keep it in-house. What we need to assess next is how we will meet what is needed. So if we do that, any comment from the board regarding potential next steps? And this is just common at this point. Kathy Blot?
Yeah, um, so I guess I would interpret the vote just slightly differently. Out of the 1,540 people who voted, 55.5% voted to keep it in-house. 41.2% said they were were open to regional and 3.3% had no opinion. So when you add the had no opinion and the folks who were in favor of going to the regional center, that's what, 44.5%? I was asked by residents during the campaign what it would take to, what I was looking for out of the ballot question. And what I said was that long-term decisions made by the town are typically made with a two-thirds vote. So that's kind of what I was hoping to see.
Right.
Didn't see that here, one way or the other. And so what I, I believe that the next step is to look at our internal operations and and make some improvements there. However, out of respect for the 44.5% of the people who are very concerned about that expense, I I think we've got to keep the door open to regional. And part of my thinking here is that we've been talking and positioning this decision as though it's a choice between two end states. It's not really. Improving your internal operations and getting them to a certain level of maturity is actually a very important prerequisite to moving to any type of a shared or regional service. In fact, there are lots of models out there, you know, you move from one stage to another. And where we are right now is we've taken fire and police dispatch and put them together, right? That's like stage two or something like that. But we haven't finished that. Okay, so what we haven't done is that we we put it in one organization, but they're on two different systems. And and I do understand how difficult that is going to be to get the fire and police using one set of technology, one set of processes. It's a very difficult thing. And quite frankly, part of the reason, regardless of the vote, I would be in favor of taking a step to improve our internal operations is because of the difficulty on getting those two org, two organizations on one system with clean data. I don't believe either the regional center or the town of Manchester has demonstrated the expertise needed to lead that type of effort. At the same time, you know, you would move into a regional center, it's too much change all at once. So I think, I don't think of us, like, like I said, as choosing between one option or another. I think we are still on a path, a journey. And I think it's important that we be very pragmatic and little risk averse here in how we take those steps. So that's kind of where mine fits at right now.
Okay, Brian?
I was always a supporter of keeping it local. All right, and I'll take your 73%. I'll throw them onto the 57% of the 60%. We can, we can always take those numbers and move them around. But I also agree with Kathy that I have no problem just taking baby steps here. And I I think, but I think that we have to make a commitment one way or the other. Okay, I like the idea of combining the two dispatches and I'd like to keep it local.
Anne?
I guess I'd like to hear more from Kathy about how we go about doing what you're doing, because we have, in fact, spent six or seven years with the current system. Part of it may be just a question of needing more hardware and software. But part of it, I think, is a, there is a and the cultural problem goes very deep. And the advantage of going to regional is that that would stop the cultural problem.
So the discussion we are having is, it is extremely common. And what you just stated is a very common misconception. And and the reason I say that is because it's a classic textbook move for, and I say this with all due respect to the current operation, our current dispatchers and the people are wonderful. But if you look at the feasibility report and all of the stuff they talk about, it is extremely technology heavy. Okay, and based on my professional opinion, I don't feel that there's an appreciation in in the town as to how difficult it is going to be, okay, to change that core technology. It's a very difficult thing. Cleaning the data, it even says in the feasibility report, it could take 12 to 18 months. It's going to be a very difficult thing. If you add moving to an organization that has not yet demonstrated the ability to cleanly transition a town into their regional center smoothly bothers me. And and personally, I feel that the regional center is a well-run organization. They, since the state took it over in 2019, they've done a great job and it is a well-run organization. Problem I'm having is that the act of transitioning, planning and executing the transition is a different skill set. And neither the regional center nor the town of Manchester has demonstrated that they haven't. So if we take a very complicated transition and you have an inexperienced organization on one side and an inexperienced organization on the other side, it's not a great recipe for success. It's not that we can't do it, but it's going to be messy. And then I feel honestly that that is what happened with the other towns, that they didn't pay enough attention perhaps to the act of the transition. Because it is a well-run organization.
Which other towns, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, that, it's my understanding that the other towns that are part of the regional center, they, their road to that regional center was bumpy. There was a lot of negative feedback.
And that was when the, when the sheriff's office was
That's correct, yes. It's under new management, right? Which I think is what, like I said, doing a great job. I just don't, I haven't seen the the state demonstrate.
They haven't brought on any other towns and and
And that's a different skill set, right?
And that is a different skill set.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, because I understand how
But I don't, aside from waiting until they have brought in other towns, what should we be doing on our side?
Yes, so what I would recommend, and one thing, I I, in hindsight, I wish I had asked more questions or pushed a little harder during the public forums to review the actual transition plan, because it's really very important. I, when I tried to ask about that in the past, I think the feedback I got was, well, we'll worry about that after we sign on with the regional center. And and that to me is a little bit backwards. So one thing
Okay, go ahead.
So I just to answer your question, one of the things I would do as a next step is actually review the transition plan for the regional center. Let's partner with them and understanding the steps. I think the first few steps, though, would be to consolidate some of the systems and the data, okay? Which is, in fact, improving our current internal operations, getting everything on the same system and mimic as much as possible the regional center. It's called parallel, parallel processing or parallel processes, right? Get our internal operations to mimic as much as possible what the regional center does. Then if we want to take a step and actually move to the regional center, it would, I think it would go much more smoothly. I I just have seen a lot of messy conversions and and with, with something as important as public safety, it's just
Right. Well, and this is, this is where you bring, you know, in in the area of expertise and insight, which we haven't had. And I think, so what we currently are doing at this moment is just discussing next steps. I would say that after some conversations in terms of potential next steps, in addition to reviewing transition plan, and I, that's in terms of consolidating the current systems and internal operations. The current systems and internal operations along those lines. Right, when we closed fire dispatch, it moved to police. There's no. My understanding anyway is that there's no equal management of dispatch. And that is a, that is a critical problem. I think that, that the fact that it is currently located within the police department is another problem. Either it needs, and again, this is after discussions, if we choose to keep it in town. Dispatch should be its own very secure facility with oversight by both departments equally.
So if I may comment on that, yes. So what I mean by mimicking the, the regional operation is, is that, that would be absolutely one piece of it. And, and I have been in the position where I have had to run a shared service for a peer as a customer. It's, it's a really tough model and it, it usually doesn't serve anybody well. It really is important for that type of operation to have some independence. And by doing it internally, you know, first, it helps train our own people to understand what's really involved. I mean, a lot of this sounds simple and it's, it's so far from simple. That taking these baby steps, I think, is really, really important. Well, not baby steps, but.
Moving to a separate, secure, building a se- separate, secure location is not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was really referring to the, the leadership, uh, an org structure. Having the, the dispatch function be an independent. Structure or, or leadership structure, not so much the physical. And I, I wasn't referring to that.
That was my, my reference. And to that end, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, we, we, it's fairly secure where it is.
Moderately.
Moderately, but it, it should be independent of the police department right now. I think the fact that they, you know, it should be a closed door, it's an open door, there's, you know, it, it, it should be.
There's no way into dispatch except through the police station.
Correct. Notifications. But i- i- it's, it's, it's physically and perceptually and culturally part of the police department. And not part of the, and that's, that's, so I think these are aspects that, that. Can be addressed. Also, I think in terms of current dispatch, now that there will be changes. We have one dispatcher who's already looking and going to. Would like to go to police academy, we'd like another one who'd like to transition out. So, you know, we're, we're, we talk about keeping local dispatch and. The costs of, on bringing on how many more brand-new local dispatch and all the costs associated with that are things we have to consider.
Yeah, and, and just a, along those lines too. The, I, I really hope again that we can. Steer the discussion around, this is not two different options, but this is a journey that we are on. And like I said, shared services and regionals are very sophisticated operational model. And there are certain prerequisites that you want to complete before you move to that next stage. And that's how I kind of like to steer the conversation. So you can always choose to stop, okay, at a certain stage. But that would really mean you don't want to continuously improve and you don't want to save money and you don't want to do a lot of good things. But I have seen many organizations go from a immature internal operation from a technology standpoint. And try to just go to a souped-up shared service. It's, it's messy and messy and public safety, I just, you know.
I also would like to see, and, and this is where it was really also disappointing to, to see. A further chasm being developed between our public safety and, and. And I, I think that it was unfair how. Fire department was kind of singled out as, as what I perceive to be the bad guys to a certain extent and. They take the bulk of the, they're the ones that go out on the bulk of the calls, the EMS, I mean, it's EMTs. I, I, I just again feel that wherever, whatever baby steps we take. They have to be equally and properly represented in everything. Brian, do you have any?
Well. I'll take, except from all, not exception, but reality here is I think maybe the first responder is always. Okay, they're all, they're the ones that are out all the time. Okay, you call nine-one-one, I felt, alright. Personal experience, I'm black eyes, couple of years ago, called nine-one-one. The police respond first, because they're on the streets, they're out, okay? So to say that. The fire and the EMTs are the first responders, I have.
I'm just talking statistically, Brian, if you look at what phone number, and this, this predates your being on the board, so it's not, I'm just saying this is data.
And what I would say is that I, I like Kathy's approach, okay? But, and I, I like the concept of trying to work together. I mean, that's, there is an obvious. Sparrow look at, at both fire and police, and I'd like to see that come together. I think that perhaps bringing a. One, a different roof makes a lot of sense to me, okay? What happened, if you went regional, but I think if you bring, keep it local. I think it should be its own entity, maybe under a public ser, a public safety officer as it were. I just don't want, I, I, I've heard an awful lot from the constituency and. Yes, we had thirty-five percent turnout, which was huge, and you mentioned that, okay? The fact is. I, I still believe that the, there's an appetite to keep it local and I don't want, and, and I'm willing, I'm willing to absorb and explore your, your path. But I don't want it to lead that journey to a point where, a point of return.
So yeah, a, along that line, Brian, here's. One of the things I would recommend is, you know, keeping an open mind and continuing on this journey. I think requires us to get a little more educated about what it really means to be, to transition into that shared service, to that regional service. And I, I, I really feel like we haven't done that yet. And specifically. I, I certainly would like to see the actual contractual language, number one. And secondarily. I just don't feel we have really negotiated anything with the regional service. I understand how they operate and yes, it's. You know, do things my way, but I just feel they have matured to a point where we can have a conversation with them about. Just saying with them, look, we're on a journey here and, you know, going to you, you know, to the regional center right now is maybe. A, a bridge too far for us, but we're on a journey. Can you help us with that journey? And specifically, you know, the, the tech, again, I'll mention that, we should not in any way, in my opinion, deviate from. What they use, how they u it, how they use it without board level approval. And we should be able to demonstrate that competency internally. Because if we can't do that, then we are never going to be ready.
Right.
To go to regional, okay? We, it's to the culture point that Anne was getting to. I think we need, we can do some things internally to help ourselves learn how to. How to be a partner in a, in a shared service. I, I don't think we have that skillset built into the, into our DNA.
And I need to.
Yeah.
Circle this back around. So these are, these are. Next steps. I know some people would love to see this. A lot of people would love to see this put to bed. The reality is that, that. Situations are always changing, circumstances are always changing. I, I would love to have a. Have this concluded, but I, I think it really truly merits. Exploring what you've brought up, Kathy, and, and that's perspective that. I haven't heard, and I know we've been exploring, looking into potentially regional, local for many years. But I have not heard, and it, it may, just because I haven't heard, it doesn't mean it has not been brought up before. I, I, I think we obviously need to have further discussions on this. Within the board and then we can open it up to a public forum. Does that make sense to everybody? Anne, what do you think?
I know. I'm sorry, I'm still having trouble understanding the steps on the journey. I just.
One more time, oh, one thing that is in the feasibility study. Is that the fire department and the police department are in two separate, I guess, records management systems. And the fire department is doing duplicate data entry as an example.
And the, the, the support is, is ending for the record benefits. I think both record benefits.
So what I'm saying is that unless those two systems have been reconciled on a. Periodic basis. The data is, it's going to be a mess, okay? And there's, there's a mess to clean up and that takes considerable time, okay? And. Once again, I think we have to go on a, a journey of learning. I don't think there's an appreciation for what that entails. And if you mix that very difficult work. With changing personnel, with changing processes, I just think it's too much change at once.
Just my, my, my concern.
Yes.
Is that. A system that has a single dispatcher on is not safe. As has, and, and the chief has.
Yes.
Chief Clary has stated that.
Right, and I, so I think that's the other important point here is that how do we address that? Need to add a second dispatcher when, when it's needed. And to keep the, keep the dispatch internal might require overstaffing, which is what I think was the option presented. I'm a little unclear as to why. The regional, once again, we can't partner with the regional dispatch or with other towns to help us solve that problem. I don't think we can solve it here today. But I, I agree with you, that is an issue we have to resolve.
We, we currently have backup from Rockport. They answer the telephone, they don't know the town.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But they have the same. Access.
So, so one of the questions I would have is, why can't we use the regional center as our backup instead of Rockport? And I don't remember, it could just be my memory, I don't remember discussing.
Regional get our, could I ask Greg to jump in? Again, we're, we're. Let's just give a few more minutes on this, if, if that's okay.
I think this is a very important topic and I'm willing to spend a lot of time on.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to find out.
I remember Chief Fitzgerald telling me that after so many seconds, I think twenty seconds, our calls go to Rockport. I thought they were the backup. But I could be mistaken about.
Oh, it is, it is Rockport. It's just that when, personal experience, my call went to Rockport.
Yep.
I said, there's jerks down doing donuts at Tex Point. They said, Tex what?
Right, right.
Okay, we're, we're, we are, no, we're, we're, I'm, we are, but, and, and I'm sorry, but, but. This is something I think we can continue to discuss for a while and, and unfortunately. We have a bit of an agenda and so I, I would like to ask the board if. We are in agreement that we need to continue with next steps at this point. And, and Greg had, does have some ideas in terms of, of how we might. Do some staffing as well as. As well as she says. Staffing, alright, I'll leave it at that. Greg, did you want to chime in with anything here?
Well. I, I think Kathy's point is a good one in terms of step one really is making sure we are on. A single RMS, a re, record management system that both, that is serving both, the, both fire and police needs thoroughly and adequately. To, to me, that's a, that's an immediate step that, that we need to take. And if we can take it with some supplemental appropriation, come a fall special town meeting, that, that probably makes sense. In, in the meantime. You know, we, we, we tee that up and make sure that we have things ready to roll, once that funding is, is approved. And, and a good plan in place, I think. I, I think we need some. Certainty for. Is it, is it a three-year, four-year period that, that we're going to remain in-house if that's the decision? I don't. I don't think it's healthy to keep having this uncertainty. Of whether or not it's in-house or not. And so I would encourage us to. To commit to. Again, if it's going to be the in-house, let's commit to in-house and let's make it work. Let's work towards. A more seamless system and a system that is managed equally by, by both departments so that both departments feel hundred percent ownership. Of that dispatch operations. I, I think we can do that. That doesn't preclude down the road, but I think, a, a change, but I think for the next X number of years, we need to say we're in-house.
Okay. I, I, it, it sounded to me like the board, the, the majority of the board has the appetite for. Investigating. How to, how to consolidate. We don't need to shut the door at this point. We absolutely need to. Bring. Up to current standards what we have. Chief Clary has a comment. Chief.
I'm, I'm just curious if the board.
Sorry, hold please.
I, I just wanted to find out if the board was actually interested in hearing from me at this point, because it would certainly be a lot more than a comment.
I don't want to say no, chief, because I think we always want to hear what our public safety members would say. I, I, I would ask that if, and, and that if you. Have something further than, than, than. Beyond. What you've shared with us. Please do so.
Well, I wouldn't say it's beyond what I've shared with you, but it's in response to. Some other plans that have been discussed this evening. That affect or alter what I have said in the past.
Okay, thank you, yes, please.
I, I, I would just say the biggest, if, if I have to make a brief comment, because this debate will go on. To have phrased the vote as to go to the regional. Or stay and appropriate the money and have two dispatchers twenty-four seven. To equate the services here, both with personnel and technology and oversight with the regional. And that was formed, that, that was the question as the vote. That it was my understanding and interpretation, then the board would vote or not vote to do the same thing. That at tonight's meeting, you should be voting on whether we're going to. That at tonight's meeting, you should be voting on whether we're going to the regional as the option given to the citizenry, or we're staying in town, we're upgrading the technology, and we're putting two dispatchers on 24/7 and trying to bring everything here up to snuff. And now what I'm hearing now is baby steps again. This has been a 15-year process that still hasn't ended. And with respect to trying to do dual purpose, it's like dating two different people, and then four years from now deciding who you're going to marry. There's an extreme amount of money that will be spent that may not be needed. And there's an extraordinary amount of work that would have to be done on both the fire and police side to bring things in line. I won't speak for Chief Fitzgerald, but we've talked in the past, and most people want a decision. Are we staying or are we going so we can make progress in one direction or the other? To continue to get more information and look at duplicate systems with the regional, we do know what the final product is. We know how many dispatchers are working, we know what software they use, we know how they dispatch, we know all of that. If we stay here, that is a big question mark, because it's all dependent on what technology the town votes to appropriate money for, it depends on how many personnel the town votes to 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 appropriate money for. So it's a big question mark. And I think with all the public forums and with 15 years of research and all the items that have been presented, there needs to be a definitive decision made. Otherwise, the the past 15 years are going to go on for the next 15 years. And every day we fail to make a decision is another day we're potentially unsafe. I have much more in 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 conjunction with a lot of 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 what Kathy Bellotta brought up um, from internal, but but it seems like public safety, who knows how public safety works, continually goes to the bottom of the list with respect to quote-unquote opinions or what decisions need to be made. And I and I I feel it it disrespects my position, I feel it disrespects Chief Fitzgerald's position. And and I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah. I can make one comment. Um, so I just wanted to relay a comment that a resident gave to me, um, when I was speaking with people prior to the vote. Um, I was talking with a group that was unfamiliar with dispatch, we were talking about other topics, the school, I think. And I brought up the the concept of dispatch, I asked the person, how are you going to vote? And what she said was, you know, I really don't know much about it, I I'm just going to go with whatever the police chief and the fire chief say. And I had to inform her that we were not all on the same page. And what she said was, really? And they want me to decide? So I respect and agree with everything that that Chief Clary said, and in the past, I've said many times, I'm very comfortable with shared services. But I think part of how we got ourselves into this conundrum is because our public safety officials are in disagreement. And I don't think that is fair to the town. And and I think we need to fix that first. And whatever we decide to do, I would like to see personally a united conversation that the police chief, the fire chief, and the town administrator come to the board with a transition plan. How are we going to get to where we want to go? Um, because chief, the the chiefs are the experts in public safety, right? They are. And I feel like we've all been put in the middle. I'm not a big fan of that.
Okay, um, Todd Fitzgerald?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to echo some of Chief Clary's thoughts in regards to a final decision. I mean, I, this is, as he said, has been going on for uh, a considerable amount of time, uh, although we may disagree, I think at the end of the day, we're both looking for some sort of guidance from the board in a final decision, so we can come together and uh, make some sort of uh, or have some sort of discussion and uh, plan whether we transition to go to the regional or whether we go. So I think at the end of the day, that's pretty much what I'm looking for from the board, you know, a a a decision on whether we are going or or leaving. I understand Kathy's points about the uh, the the baby steps, but I but I think with our expertise here in town and with the guidance of the board, we can get to that final place where we need to be, whether it's moving, transitioning to another place in town, out of the police station for dispatch, or if it's staying here, or if it's co-managed, how how we get there. But I I thi- I think the decision, uh, if we're going to stay or go, needs to be decided sooner rather than later.
And Todd, before you go,
Yep.
congratulations on your grandson.
Oh, thank you very much. He's three, almost three months.
Oh, eight months, thank you. Um, Sarah Malish?
Yeah, so I've worked with large corporations for 40-odd years. And they have call centers that are throughout the United States and throughout the international communities. And the dispatch is in effect a call center. And every call center needs to train the employees to react to the calls that come in. And it doesn't matter whether it's in the police station or in a regional dispatch center. And I think that the cost of remaining within the police station is not reflective of the the services provided. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, uh any further comments from the board? Brian?
Uh, I like, I like the approach that Greg made. Okay, uh, let's commit for three years or five years, okay, while we upgrade our systems internally. No, don't close the door on regional, but let's let's to the to the point of both chiefs, let's make a decision. I think, and I'm I'm fully on board with with Greg's uh, three-year, five-year plan.
Anne?
Yes, a former head of the finance committee. We're talking about spending a lot of money over four or five years that will have good payback. And perhaps, probably Kathy's right, and we have to spend that, and we have to take that time before we're ready. But so we're asking, we're asking the town to pay for something that that we plan to at least reconsider it.
And it will be huge money, I don't, the people, I don't.
Oh, just just having someone independent who was in charge
Right.
is is, that's a whole other administrative position.
Let me offer another, because I, once again, I'm going to position this as a journey, not as an end state. And there are a couple of different ways. I I think the steps that I'm outlining are necessary regardless.
Right.
The question we haven't yet talked about tonight is who pays for it? Okay, so if you sign on with a regional center, right? And commit to that, they pay for a lot of things, right? Okay, that is an option. Haven't seen a contract, haven't seen a timeline, haven't seen a transition plan, that is a perfectly viable option for our journey. But I've never been in the habit, just, I'm new here, so I'll let you know how I think. I'm never going to approve something without seeing it. Okay, that's just not in my nature. So I believe the journey we need to take is to consolidate systems, you know, address the 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 staffing issues, the question of how you pay for it is determined based on whether or not you sign on the dotted line. I have not seen a contract, I don't know where those negotiations stand, I don't know if we've even negotiated anything. And I think that is an option, we're going on our journey.
It's not just a question, I I believe that the software that the regional center uses is software as a service, meaning that you have to have absolutely reliable internet service, which, as you may have noticed, we don't have here.
Yeah.
So just upgrading our software, our our hardware and software in town is actually introducing a potential serious failure, because we lose internet when there is a storm, when there's.
I I understand that and agree with that. All I'm suggesting is I believe the towns, that we haven't reviewed a transition plan. That is what I think our next step is, and then it's a question of how we pay for it. We're either going to do something internally, and it's very expensive to keep it internally, I agree with that. That's not something I would particularly, you know, like to do, all right? But we we, I think we're putting the cart before the horse by talking about the money before the how, yeah, that's all, that's really all I'm saying.
Anne? Just, just I the the regional center is not a huge business. I I I'm slightly concerned that they don't their willingness to work with us after we've said, well, not right away. And I'm sure we can get a copy of the contracts.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Well, why don't we make that an action?
I agree, I'd like to see up beyond the contracts and their proposed transition plan.
Okay. And Becky, as chair, you get to figure out how to do that. Okay, uh, before we quickly decide on act or do it, decide on action, I'm going to take one more comment from the public. I've got two more, okay.
Rain Iavani?
Rain, I'll come back to you, I understand you're on a phone, I will come, but I am going to start. Let's see, wait, um I will simply take the three hands up and the Rain Iavani, and then the board will come to an act, decide, uh, decide on an action. Sarah Pierce? And please, let's limit comments now to preferably something that's either not been stated, or if you are confirming something stated previously, let's keep it brief, please.
Hi, yes, Sarah Pierce, Nine Friends Street. I just wanted to say that, um, listening to all the comments made tonight, um, I personally believe that we should keep our 911 local, um, and wanted to just comment on the turnout of the town meeting and having people show up in that capacity. It was a large turnout, and people did voice their opinion. Um, I've always found our in-house emergency response system and people who work for the town to be amazing, there are people write letters all the time. Public safety is something that we need to pay for. I think improving, um, a great set of members of our own town and community that know the town would be the way that I think the town should pursue, commit to at least three or five years of doing that and explore options outside of that, but commit to at least giving the townspeople the um, comfort and knowledge that they'll have that for three years or five. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Uh, Mary Foley?
Uh, Mary Foley, One Pulaski Drive. Um, my comment is that I just wanted to express my concern that I feel that the conversation that the select board has had tonight completely brushed over the vote and and how residents voted and have pivoted and moved on to a new strategy. And I applaud, um, the fire chief for speaking up and Chief Fitzgerald. And I I think a decision needs to be made, and I'm just, I I I can't express how deeply concerned I am, how how this has been brushed over.
Um, I would like to address that, Mary, we did not brush it over, and it has been brought up, it was discussed at the very beginning, and then a couple more times. That has not in any way been brushed over if that, and I apologize if that's your perception. Okay, um Mr. Coin?
Uh, yes, Robert Coin, 115 Beach Street. You got muted, Bob.
Bob?
Oh, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. I I can't agree more with Mary Foley. We are a small town government of the people, for the people, and by the people, not special interest. And that's what's going on here. We are not in an unsafe environment, as the chief said, we're in on safety here. The the police chief has done a great job here with this town, the fire department, and our safety and if you look at the town report of last year, there were 1,209 911 calls that our police department took with no problems, no safety issues, whatever. So I I think that the suggestions made that we need to look at this three to five years from now and see how the Middleton complex is working out, because that's something that this whole issue has been biased by the selectmen in that it needs to be a meeting with the fire, with the police chief, and with the uh, citizens group here to monitor the the program.
Okay, Mr. Coin, thank you very much. I'm going to say that there has not been bias, what there has been has been complete information and facts, not not swayed or misrepresented, it has been on some social media. Um, but thank you for your comments, I'm going to hear from Lorraine Iavani. Lorraine?
Yes, thank you, Becky, um, Miss, um, Madam Chair. Uh, Lorraine Iavani, 20A Pine Street. I've been listening and very carefully, and uh, first of all, I want to welcome our two select people. I think everyone has brought up some interesting viewpoints, and here's what I'm going to reflect back. We don't want, we're dealing with public safety, um, and we have had the voice of the electorate, um, before us. With public safety, you cannot be in a position of paralysis by analysis. And I think Kathy brought up some good points, I did like her idea on the transition plan. But I think we have to keep in mind two things here. Both chiefs, um, and I've heard in the loo, uh, someone allude to the fact, um, yeah, maybe they had a few minor differences, but basically, there are two public safety officers, and they are both managers. And I think what I'm hearing from both chiefs is this, in order to run an organization, you have to be able to look out at a certain point and say, this is what we need to do, this is what we, and they've done that. We're we're re-debating tonight what has already been done, and we've spent, as I said in my email, extraordinary amount of money. We're re debating tonight what has already been done and we've spent, as I said in my email, extraordinary amount of money on this. They have already laid out their needs. People have said, that's that's fine, we're going to support our chiefs and what they need. Our job, or it seems to me what we should be doing as a as a town, is giving them what they need. Now Kathy, you came up with a great idea on a plan, both chiefs sit down and they they finalize their their final plan. And then Greg, you know, brought up a good point as well, I mean, we we have to present to, you know, at a town meeting. Basically what we want to spend. But we've arrived at a point here, quite frankly, that, you know, we can't have paralysis by analysis. This has been going on for a while, everyone knows it. And, you know, there's a learning curve, but let's face it, I've been following this. And I know Becky's been following with following it, Anne has, John Round isn't there. But I've read the feasibility report, everybody's read everything, it's it's been posted, we're all set, we voted. And we voted in an informed manner. So I want you to think about this, the chief, Chief Clary brought up a key point here. We are putting our public safety at risk. This is the number one thing that we need to be concerned about in this town is our public safety. And if they as managers. If they as managers cannot plan their staffing and what their needs are. They cannot run the organizations the way they need to do it, so I I leave you with that, I don't want to overtalk here. But basically, I am a little concerned that we're doing this paralysis by analysis. There is a learning curve here, if people have not been aware of what's been going on, but. We've actually had the vote and I think Anne was the one that suggested that we put it on the, you know, at an election. Forum, so people have voted and now our job is to figure out with the two chiefs. Basically, how we're going to accomplish what we what people want us to do.
Okay, Lorraine, thank you very much, Lorraine, I do have one more hand up, and I would like to get to that.
And I appreciate your allowing me to speak, Becky, thank you so much, okay, good evening, everyone.
Thank you very much, Lorraine. All right, last, Mr. Ross Maron, and hopefully, if you would, if it's a reiteration. Please keep it brief.
Thank you, Becky, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike Ross Maron, thirteen Crooked Lane. In a previous meeting, I asked the board straight out, what are you going to do with the data? And I got one answer that was very fuzzy. And another one that was a little bit more succinct, which was if it showed a clear directionality, we're going to have to listen to that data. So the data of this survey basically said, I'm going to call this survey non-binding resolution. Was clearly the people want to keep dispatch in town for right now. The data said it costs money, the question said straight out, it's going to cost money. We're smart people, we understand it's going to cost money, we get that, it's not a new surprise. When we voted it, the way the question was worded, as obfuscated as it was, it was clear and that's how people voted. What was new this evening, and I really appreciate the board bringing it up. There is truly a cultural divide going on between our police and fire. That's what the elephant in the room is. Until we can actually resolve that one problem, then talking about dispatch is a complete waste of time. Something has to be done about that cultural divide. These chiefs work for us, they report to us as town people, as board, etc. These people report to us, they got to do the rock and sockerobots and get it worked out among themselves already. I'm not in favor of moving this dispatch out of town just because we have a cultural divide. There's cheating us, there's cheating everybody else, that's where the efforts have to go. And we can revisit dispatch, where it sits and who sits and what chair, two years from now, three years from now. But it doesn't have to be done now, I want to see the board vote on this tonight, keep it in town for three years and understand what the real issue is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross Maron, okay. Or. Do I have a motion then, is there any more discussion, first of all? What sort of emotion are you looking? That's what I'm wondering, does any member? Member of the board wish to make a motion this evening? Okay, hearing no motion. Then what I will do, what we. I would like to see. What Kathy has, some of the information she's asked for, I would say that. Town does deserve a decision and. I think perhaps the next step would we would be perhaps to have Greg, the chiefs. And me. Have a meeting. And then we can go from there in terms of getting in action at the next meeting.
I would just also respectfully request the contract, the proposed contract, I don't know how we could. Evaluate something we haven't seen.
Right, exactly.
And which should include the proposed transition.
Right.
High level milestones.
Yep. Kathy, would you like to request that?
I move to request.
Press motion. Oh, I just mentioned, you can you can get a hold of the.
Oh.
Regional and request that.
Oh, yes, am I, if I am empowered to do that, I would love to, yeah.
I would, I would ask that while you're speaking to regional. You brought up something, can we explore regional as a backup as opposed to Rockport?
Yes, that was the other.
Yep, yes.
Okay, I mean, that 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 draws all the i's and crosses the t's to a certain extent.
Okay, so I think that what we need to do, Greg. If we can get a meeting with. Either via Zoom with the two chiefs, you and me. And then bring information to the next meeting at which point we will make a decision. With some further, you know, just just a little more clarity on how we support.
Sorry, just for clarification purposes, do you want me to contact the leader of the regional center?
And Greg has that contact info.
Okay, so I will contact the regional center to request the contract and the transition.
Greg, is that something Kathy could do or would it be better coming from you?
Yeah, it's it's just because I have a working relationship with Allison already, it would be a little easier, but it's up, it's up to you.
Then Kathy, if you could be part of that conversation with Greg to ensure that. The the one other thing is whether they would consider being a backup, right? Okay, all right, so then in six twenty one meeting. We will be making a decision. Okay, and thank you to everybody who has sat through this, weighed in, given comments, and that's. The beauty of town government and everybody having a voice. I I would think that we can put off the preliminary discussion regarding board processes and information as well. As we do still have executive session, so. I would. Like to move the meeting to executive session per Mass General Law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A two. Without returning to public meeting, do I have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, yes? Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair says yes, okay. So if everybody could sign off other than board members and Greg, and again, thank you all for attending. And Greg, you'll stop the recording. Can I ask for two second bio? Soon as everybody's gone, yes, we're going to have, and you don't need to keep it two seconds.